For our work session this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. We are convened and we're going to start with announcements. Let's start with Ms. Frogue. Do you have any announcements, Ms. Frogue?
I do. First of all, I want to congratulate our colleague Jill Spearing, who was one of five national finalists for the BAMI Awards. And she went to DC this past week and looked very glamorous in a sparkly dress. But we're proud of her for being honored. Also, I want to thank folks who came out to help on Hands on Nashville Day at our schools in general and in particular K-Love Radio Station that helped me a lot on Saturday and some other great folks. And finally, I will be attending a meeting, a community meeting, this coming Monday, the 30th, at Westmead Elementary where we will be discussing the possible expansion of that school. It will be at 5:30 PM at Westmead and invite anyone who's interested particularly in our neighborhoods to come out. And that's it.
Perfect. Thank you.
I tend to day of just, this is a comment. I did a great event this weekend with the Nashville Symphony. It was their opening gala with Renee Fleming as the singer. And I'll tell you, it was a phenomenal event. I have also enjoyed being on their board for the last year, which has been a very interesting piece. One thing I would like to just reach out to them, I guess, the musicians of the Nashville Symphony Orchestra, as well as management, and outline our gratitude. In the next year, as part of their new labor agreement with management, they will be likely tripling or quadrupling their educational opportunities for young students, as well as for the community at large. So the extent, we talk a lot about music and the arts and education, its importance to us. I know the last year has been a tenuous one for musicians and the organization as a whole. But this board certainly thanks the musicians for the service they will be giving in the year ahead to schoolchildren and to the community at large. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the management and staff who organized last night's First Choice Festival at the Tennessee State Fairgrounds, which, by the way, was in the heart of District 7. By conservative estimates, we had over 7,000 students and parents attend to explore their options for the 2014-15 school year. It was a great turnout. And I think it demonstrated clearly that Metro Nashville Public Schools is, contrary to the claims of some critics, embracing choice options for students and families. So, good work to the entire team and let's let the planning commence for the 2014 festival. I also want to say thanks to my friends, Tom and Lori Lee, and the entire team at the Frost Brown Todd Law Firm for turning out in full force last weekend at Glencliff High School for Hands on Nashville Day. According to the reports this year, Hands on Nashville Day drew 2,300 volunteers and generated more than 23, excuse me, more than 200,000 in dollars' worth of labor to support our schools. So, on behalf of District 7, I want to thank everyone who turned out on Saturday. When I got to Glencliff, they sent me down to the Garden to help. And I thought, hey, the Garden, that sounds fun. Little did I know, after fighting thorn bushes and getting stuck in the mud for a few times, that that's tough work for a city boy from South Nashville, but it was rewarding. And I'm so glad everybody came out to Glencliff. Finally, as the board's liaison to the charter review process, I want to bring notice that I'll be offering a resolution in November's business meeting to lay out some priorities under which MNPS could consider charter school applications in 2014. This would address the Nashville Chamber and others' requests that the board consider a more strategic approach to the approval and deployment of new charter schools in the future. I'll be working with Dr. Register and management to develop this resolution and make sure that any guidelines we might articulate best meet the needs of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Kim.
Well, just to build on the Hands on Nashville excitement, it was just an incredible event. And I was at Fall Hamilton, which is in my district and down the street from here. And just to see the whole transformation wrought by this group of volunteers of all gray playground equipment that turned yellow and orange and green and red by the end, it was just incredible. And you just could feel, the kids are going to be so excited when they get back on campus on Monday. So, big thanks to echo, Will, to all the volunteers who came out to that. And Hands on Nashville for just making that happen possible. It's just, one morning transforms the whole building.
I saw a really cool picture of you painting one of the pieces of playground equipment. Yeah, oh, you're all over the place.
The railing?
Thank you. Ms. Spearing.
Yes. October 2nd is Walk to School Day. And this yearly activity promotes the importance of walkable neighborhoods, the importance of sidewalks, and healthy lifestyles. Last year, over 50 schools and 20,000 students, parents, and teachers participated. This year, the lead school is in my district, Dan Mills. And the mayor will join Patty Yon on the morning of October 2nd. And I want to encourage the family and family members and students and parents to walk together that morning for school. Griffin Technology is a business partner at Hunter's Lane, and they have created a remote-control monster truck. And the technology is controlled by an app which the students are building from the ground up in the Academy of Design and Technology. So, we're really excited about this and look forward to seeing this magical work. And tomorrow, I'm going to be going on school tours in Goodlettsville with Commissioner Zach Young. Look forward to that.
And could you tell us about that fantastic award you just won?
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I won the Educators Voice Award for School Board. I did not come home with the BAMI, but that's okay. And it was a wonderful experience being with educators around nationally, around the whole US, and hearing the many stories that were told.
Well, congratulations again. Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Dr. Brandon?
Just one announcement, and I'd just like to congratulate the Tuscaloosa Kindergarten Group who provided a kindergarten literacy night for new parents. And they had different components, the public library, sight words, kindergarten readiness, and use of their own library. So, they did a great job.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I want to echo what Mr. Pinkston said about the First Choice Festival last night. I got there right about 6:30 last night, and it was jam-packed even still. And, Ms. Carr, transportation wrought. I got to ride on a school bus up the hill, so I'm very excited about that. So, that was a very good and unexpected surprise. So, that was fantastic. Also, wanted to remind everybody that we, there will be a meeting tomorrow afternoon at 5:30 at the Martin Center regarding MLK. So, I hope you can all attend. This is the third and final meeting that we're going to be having on this issue. So, I hope you'll all be able to attend. Again, it's at the Martin Center at 5:30 PM. One, on a personal note, I wanted to say thank you to all my board members, as well as the entire Antioch High School family who came out on Saturday for my cousin James Buchanan's home-going. So, it was a very difficult time for our family, but it was absolutely fantastic to see so many of the Antioch High School administrators and the staff, and especially the students who came out. And so, I just wanted to say thank you again for all of your well wishes and prayers for my family. And before we go on, we're going to go ahead and do committee assignments. So, let's make, I think, Ms. Hawkins, do you have those to hand out to everybody? All right. We'll start with the assignments. Advocacy for 2014 Legislative Agenda. Chair is Anna Shepherd. Also on the committee, Amy Frog and Sharon Gentry. Budget and Finance, Will Pinkston is Chair. Capital Needs, Michael Hayes is Chair. Also on the committee, Will Pinkston and Jill Spearing. Director's Evaluation, Alisa Kim is Chair. We will move down to Ethics. I will chair that along with Dr. Brandon and Jill Spearing. Governance Chair, Amy Frog. Nondiscrimination Procurement Program, Dr. Sharon Gentry is Chair, along with Joanne Brannan. Student Assignment Task Force, we have assigned the Chair of that task force to our former board member, Mr. Mark North. But assigned as liaisons are Michael Hayes and Anna Shepherd. Teaching and Learning, Jill Spearing will chair that committee, along with Alisa Kim will also be a part of that committee. Naming of Schools, Dr. Brannan will chair the committee. Also on that is Anna Shepherd and Jill Spearing. Moving on to Administrative Committees. Investment Committee is Dr. Brannan. Charter Schools Committee, Will Pinkston. Insurance Trust will remain Alisa Kim, Anna Shepherd, and Jill Spearing. Sick Leave Bank will be Jill Spearing and Sharon Gentry. And Strategic Compensation, Dr. Brannan. Moving on to our local, state, and national appointments, I will be the board representative for the Alignment Nashville Board. Council of Great City Schools is Dr. Brannan. Dr. Brannan will also represent the board on the Metro Board of Parks and Recreation. NSBA Council of Urban Boards, Cube, I will be the board representative. Our NSBA representative is Anna Shepherd, and I will maintain my position with the council foundation. Finally, TSBA Legislative Network Representative, Amy Frog, and Coalition of Large School Systems, Amy Frog. Any questions or comments on board assignments? Thank you all so much for doing all the work that you've done in the past, and I think we're going to continue doing great work as we move forward. And now, my little finger's going bye-bye. Okay. Any other announcements before we move into discussion? Fantastic. Dr. Register, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. We've got a, I think I'll describe this as saying that we're throwing in the kitchen sink tonight. All things assessment. Assessment, accountability, testing, grading, and Dr. Changus and I have tried to collect a number of questions that have come from different board members about grading for learning, about grading practices, about testing, how much testing we have going on, and accountability. What you'll not get tonight is a report on district achievement at this point in time, maybe a little bit. But I know you're still working on the performance framework, and that should be out very shortly.
Next week, though.
Good. Terrific. Next week, next week or so. So, we might put that one on the first meeting in October, that agenda as a part of a director's report. But I think, I hope you'll find this discussion interesting tonight. And it's an opportunity for all board members to raise questions about what we're doing, what we're looking at, what's going forward, how we're making transition. And I know Paul's got some other people he's going to call up to help with this presentation a little bit later on. Dr. Steele and Ms. Steele will come up to represent leadership in learning because it's not just a research and development issue that we're dealing with here. It's also a teaching and learning issue, teaching and learning issues we're dealing with, and it's also human capital. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Register. We're happy to be here. It is a full agenda, and there have been a lot of questions. And to be honest, I'm not sure we can address all of those questions in the timeframe we have. But we're going to take our best shot at trying to hit some of the key points. Before we get into the assessment piece and the standards-based grading or grading for learning piece, which will include voices of some of our teachers represented, here are each of our tiers, as well as a principal, we want to talk briefly about the tripod survey and give you an update. Hopefully, that'll be a brief update with some data. And then, we'll get into both the standards-based grading and assessment practices because we believe they are related matters. It's about assessing whether our students have met the academic standards, how we assign grades, how we use those assessments, and how that fits together. And we will have a larger group for that portion. But I'm, and part of the standards-based grading, we will have a little bit of a presentation with regard to some of the concern about past grading practices and why we feel that this is a good move and the disconnect we sometimes have between what those grades mean and what the student achievement data shows from other measures. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. I've got Dr. Tina Stinson from our department, who I think you all know, and Shannon Black, who used to be our data coach coordinator, who's now in Human Capital, to talk about the tripod survey.
Good evening. As Dr. Register said, this is a kitchen sink presentation, so we're going to try to keep this brief because I know that you have a lot to do tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about the tripod student survey, which you may or may not have heard of. How many of you have heard of this survey? Okay. Most, but not all. And last year, we gave this as a pilot. We were allowed this or afforded this opportunity by the state. And by the way, Shannon, hop in whenever you want. We did not use it for teacher evaluation. We had a chance to pilot the survey and the mechanics and the processes. And MNPS did agree to take part in the survey again for 1314, and it will be administered twice this year. And I'm going to ask Shannon to talk a little bit about what kind of data this gives to teachers.
Good evening. Upon meeting with TNTP last week, we had a great discussion about teacher and teacher quality, and they shared some information with us about over 100 teachers in their most recent study and the feedback that they want from students and teachers and their supervisors. So, the research around teacher quality and the need for feedback from students is great. So, we think that this is a really great idea to give great information to teachers about how students engage in the classroom and about their teaching practices, and then about the relationships they're building with students. So, the survey is designed around those three things, hence the tripod.
This survey has been around for about 10 years. It's been taken by over 500,000 students in literally thousands of classrooms. It was researched and developed by a gentleman named Ron Howard, who was an economist at Harvard, but with a very strong interest in closing the achievement gap. And he went in with a preset notion of what he would find if he started surveying students. And he found, to his surprise, that race and economics and all of those things did not influence student answers to these questions. Students know when they're seeing a good teacher. It's pretty intuitive. And it was validated as part of the Measuring Effective Teaching Project, the MET Project, Bill and Melinda Gates funded. And actually, the survey results have been more highly predictive of value-added scores even than principal evaluation because you think about 30 little observers in your classroom every day seeing and observing the teacher. And the final reason we thought this would be a really good thing to give this year and last year is that our whole strategic plan hinges on the student. Every measure we created to benchmark the strategic plan against is at the student level, and we would have been remiss if we had not included the student voice. So, this year...
It will be 5% of the teacher's evaluations. So, it will go on the qualitative side. So, if you're a tested teacher and you generate your own value-add growth data, then you would be 45% observation, and 5% of that would be tripod, whereas last year it was 50%. And for our non-tested teachers, those that don't generate individual value-add data, they'll be 55% will be their observations from their observer, and then 5% will be linked to the student tripod data.
We've heard from some teachers that this is a scary process and others who think this is a fantastic idea. After all, I mean, in related arts courses and things like that, they're getting no feedback in the evaluation system except for the principal that's really based on what they are doing every day. We're going to, in your packet, you'll find a brief overview. We just put some stuff together for you for later. A brief overview of the survey, some highlights, and some research on the survey, but also some survey questions, which we'll get into. They are not, this is not a popularity contest. It's not what you remember from your college, like, I like this professor. These are very specific questions, and the research also shows that students, by and large, are not, you know, anti-teacher and likely to fill out the most negative thing they can or the most positive because they are not getting hard work. It really is not designed for that. But we did get some preliminary data back from last year, and we're going to show you just a brief glimpse of this. There's a lot of data, and so we're just going to show you the very top. And we'll email you the survey results in full if you're interested. Oh, there was some sample questions. We'll get into those in a minute. So, the first, if you look at page two, and if I put my glasses on, that would be easier for me to read. This is the district-level results for the early elementary. So, this is K1 and 2 in our district. It's reported in NCEs, which are normal curve equivalents. It's much like a percentile. You can see that Davidson County MNPS is, you know, a little bit above average in some areas and a little bit below in others. One of the things the research says that's interesting to me is that challenge and control are the two most predictive pieces of this survey. It's not care, which teachers have been surprised by. You know, students want and appreciate a well-ordered classroom in which they're challenged. So, this is very formative for us because we know where we can aim resources. And each school has one of these reports, and each teacher will be getting them through the code system. The next result you'll see on the next page is upper elementary, and that's 4, 5, and 3, 4, 5, and 6. Again, hovering around the mean. I'll leave you to look at these. And then, the third one of these is the secondary level, and that's 7 through 12. Again, these are NCEs. They're like percentiles. So, if you see an NCE of 51, you know, that's a little bit better than the state. There is also, and you don't have this in a packet... I think we have the old PowerPoint. There's also favorability ratings that go along with this. So, a 50th NCE might be 70% of students agreeing or strongly agreeing with a positive statement. And so, we're setting goals around those at the district level and in the academic performance stream.
I guess the last thing that I would add is the survey looks different for the early elementary, which is, these are done on a Likert scale. So, the early elementary only has three choices. The survey is shorter. The verbiage, the vocabulary is more simplified, slightly longer at the midelementary, and then still simplistic language. And then, it opens up to the full five Likert scale at the high school level. I think the survey takes at the high school, which is the longest of the three, about 30 minutes. And then, we're going to have them do this twice per year, a window coming up around fall break, right after.
And K through 12, every teacher will have this administered in his or her classroom. So, the unit of analysis here is the teacher. So, a couple of students may have to do this twice. That's not the aim, but so, you know, if they happen to have the art teacher and it's her period to give it. And in the packet, you'll see on page 10 and 11, at least that's what it looks like, you'll see the worksheets. They say challenge and consolidate. And I'm just giving you a snapshot of what the teachers get, but it also, so the teachers will get this. It has the questions from the survey, questions for reflection that an administrator could use, and also a crosswalk to the team rubric. So, it is aligned very closely with the team rubric and designed for feedback to the teachers. And I think that's probably about it. You can look at this at your leisure, but are there any questions?
I'm trying to understand why we give it twice. We give it, it looks like, starting October 28th through the November 15th, which is after how many weeks of school? About nine, nine, first nine weeks or so?
More like 12.
12.
Yeah, right by the end of, well, depending on how you count, fall break.
Yeah. So, then the kids have a sense of these questions or answers to these questions after 12 weeks. How is that used, then? Is it used in some way to help the teacher improve so that the next time that it's administered at the end of the year, that she can see a major variance?
Ideally, because it's tangible. It's data that you have right now. It's not something that happened last year. It's with the students that you're teaching right now, and you can act, make decisions, change your practice, more engage students, and then see how the results change, students' perceptions.
But both are included in the evaluation. However, a student will need to have been with a teacher for at least 20 days in order to take the survey. So, we'll be providing rosters of students who should get an alternative activity because they wouldn't have had the time with the teacher.
And during the pilot year, was, did you see, was this used in such a way that you saw a big difference in teachers after receiving that feedback?
The pilot was only done once, and the teachers have not yet received their feedback. It's going to be in the code system, the state's code system, and they've had some technical difficulties loading it and some issue with a contract and a vendor. So, it has not been loaded. We were provided a teacher file that didn't have school on it. But I can say that the teacher data are very interesting. We have the full range from the very first NCE all the way up to the 99th. You know, very strong teachers that we should be celebrating and recognizing, so...
And one thing I'll add with, you know, this was one of the requirements for the Race to the Top additional funding we receive from the state. And we are, as part of that agreement, we are to meet with teachers after each administration and have those conversations and to use it formatively.
Right. And my last question is, I've heard some complaints at the elementary level that the questions are confusing to the kids at the elementary level.
So, that's why Tina has included it at the very end of your packet. It's the teacher directions. And teachers are allowed to give an explanation. For example, I've heard some things as well, feedback from teachers about at the kindergarten level, they didn't really understand what a word meant. A teacher can let a student know what the word means in the survey. This is not designed as high stakes. It's to give information. And then, it also says in the directions that you're given, if a student doesn't know or doesn't have an answer, they just don't answer the question, and then it's not included in the data.
Does the elementary teacher administer the survey to their students, a different teacher?
No, we are, ideally, we would have proctors for every class, but we can't manage that. So, we are asking teachers to switch, and we are asking the principal to manage that process so that, you know, the best friends aren't doing each other's or the worst enemies aren't doing each other's. But if you look again to the language, the challenge in the early elementary, they are as simply worded as, "In our class, it is okay to stop trying." They are pretty basic. Now, we also do have some language issues. We do have a Spanish version of this survey, but we don't have different languages other than that. So, any accommodations that can go with the TCAP, including read aloud in this case, we can use with students that don't speak English primarily.
How long does it, what's the typical length of time to take to answer the survey?
About 30 minutes.
About 30 minutes.
And you said that this was going to be considered 5% of the teacher evaluation effective this school year?
Yes.
So, are we going to have the challenges with the additional languages worked out? Because if we're going to hold teachers accountable, even if it's 5%, we need to make sure that all of our students are able to understand the surveys. So, if we're not giving it, if it's not available in all languages, that could create an issue. So, we will have those issues worked out?
We did, we have only heard from one school so far that last year was a challenge because they have about 13 or 14 different languages. So, to get translators in at that, to that level was really hard. So, we will be working with the EL office, but we don't have a great solution because we have a limited number of translators. But for upper grades, dictionaries can be used. But for upper grades, dictionaries can be used, again, read aloud, clarifying questions, you don't know what captivate means. The teacher is allowed to explain that in multiple ways, as long as it's not a leading answer.
And that's fun. I just, you know, from a teacher's standpoint, if I'm going to be held accountable, I want to make sure that all my students understand what it is they're being asked, so.
And I'll check with the state to see what kind of research has been done on this, but also what they've, because we of course are the biggest ELL district in the state.
Chairwoman raises a great point. Do you mind if I ask which cluster of the school was where we encountered some hiccups there?
It was in the Overton cluster.
Okay. I completely agree. I think that that's worth spending a lot more time on to make sure that this is done, you know, and with great fairness to the teachers.
Yeah. Otherwise, there's going to be some difficulty. I can see that this would raise some concern about overall evaluation scores. Dr. Gentry.
So to the languages issue, so is the alternative, so let me kind of preface this. So I think what pops out into my mind is ELL population is the one we continue to struggle with in other aspects, value-add and other areas that we're trying to see academic growth. So there's definitely value in trying to get to, because this seems pretty fundamental, right? So there could be, this really highlights some underlying things that may be barriers to a student's ability to learn. So I would say of several populations, the ELL population is probably the one where we'll get the most value out of understanding, one of the ones that will get a lot of value out of understanding what those underlying barriers, barriers to their learning may be outside of the language barrier. Because just because you don't speak English doesn't mean you're not a bright student. So I agree. So the question becomes, we get to D-Day and it's time to start administering the test. We haven't translated, we don't have equity with regards to translators. Do we take those ends out of the mix so that they're not punitive to the teacher because of a barrier in language? So what's the alternative to not being able to include them fairly?
We could certainly take out first-year ELL students as we do for TCAP reading assessment because we are supposed to administer this, much like an assessment. And it's quite possible that we can, and I'm pretty sure that Nicole would agree with me if she were here, that we can get these translated into at least Arabic, Kurdish, and a few other languages, even though they won't have the survey in front of them. It is a paper and pencil survey and for the most part, they won't have, they'll have to bubble in a different place. We should be able to get these translated into a number of other languages.
My other question is around, at what point we actually start to include these in teacher evaluations? So I understood it to be a part of the contingency around the Race to the Top component. Is there a date? So this coming school year is embedded in the Race to the Top, is tied to that?
That's part of the requirement.
So in that we've only administered it once, so we don't have the delta. I don't know, I'm trying to understand, what do we do with the end of year that we already administered? So now we're going to go into a start-of-the-year administration of the data and then we'll do an end-of-the-year, so two times this coming year. But we're still going to include the one year? I'm just trying to understand, what are we going to do with the one pilot version of this approach?
The one from the spring is not included.
Okay, because I thought somebody said it was.
It is not, not included in the teacher evaluation. What is, the data will be available for the teacher in code, and code is where the evaluation data live, but it is not factored into their 2012 or 13, 14 evaluation. That data will just live there for them.
So to the technical glitch, so we've not been able to get the data in the way that we expected because of some technical difficulties. Is the expectation that whatever, wherever we see the results of this information, it will highlight what that delta is as well? So does it highlight the growth and point of growth or recession? Or do we have to manually kind of say, you were here, now you're here? Is that a manual process or is that something we would get in a report for a teacher?
We have not seen yet what a teacher report will look like. I would expect that they would have something like that and they are very open. They've been very open to suggestions thus far and I can certainly suggest looking at the growth piece. I would be happier, in fact, if we had just the first, the fall, especially since teachers have not been able to see their data thus far, have that be formative only and only count the spring, but that's not the rule.
So is the Race to the Top a requirement that we count them both? Because to me, I think to Jill's question, I was expecting your answer to be, the first one is formative, the second one is where we would actually start to apply the evaluation.
That's the requirement. It's getting additional data points at different times of the year. That's out of our control.
Any additional questions? Great.
Thank you.
Good information. Thank you.
I'm going to ask leadership in learning and our teachers and principals to join us at the table.
So this is anecdotal, but I'll say it while they're coming up. In my last system, I was involved in student surveys, not this one, not as sophisticated as this one, but in high school, with high school students and high school reform, going back a decade or so. And the reactions we saw were teachers were anxious about this going into it, but they learned so much from this data and listening to the data about what their students say about the way classroom instruction goes on. I'm pretty excited about this. I think it can be really good information. And particularly if you think about those teachers that are in, that serve in non-tested areas, it is something objective. And I support having it applied to the 15% for the untested teachers. It's now, it's a part of that 50% observation. It would take a change in legislation to include it in the other part, but I think that's something we ought to pursue too.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to move into the second part of the agenda, which is combining the grading for learning and student assessment practices. And let me introduce our distinguished guests here today, some of whom I just met in the past hour. Pamela Newman from DuPont Hadley is a teacher at DuPont Hadley. Bethany Madden from Tulip Grove. And Serena Moore from White's Creek. And I think, Kevin Armstrong, principal at DuPont Hadley. And I believe we know everyone else at the table. So I'm going to take just a few minutes and do a little presentation and then Kevin's going to share some information from what's happening at DuPont Hadley with respect to continuous improvement and grading for learning. And then we're going to open it up to a discussion around what we're doing in the classroom in terms of assessing student learning. So just briefly, the concerns with the traditional measures of standards-based grading. I'm going to show some data from Metro Schools to back up this first point in terms of traditional grades not being an accurate measure of student achievement. I'll say that it varies considerably from school to school and classroom to classroom what the standard means. And I'll hold that thought for just a few minutes until we look at some data. What we're trying to do with standards-based grading is get into what students have learned. And the discrepancy is sometimes called what students have learned versus what they've earned on a point system, doing things that are sometimes not directly related to student learning to get those points. And a lot of times a distinction is made between practice, the things we do prior to the summative assessments, while we're getting up to speed, the homework assignments, the things on a daily basis we do that aren't part of the grading process, but help us get there and then we're held accountable for the summative part. I'll say that with, and I know you've had a presentation and heard from several principals about standards-based grading. I will add that this is an area that, independent of the middle school movement that started a couple of years ago, it was an area of interest for me and for my department. We had started to look at what was happening in other places across the country that were getting results. And there were indeed positive correlations between student achievement, student motivation, and the implementation of standards-based grading. And I've talked with the research staff in Jefferson County schools in Louisville who have used this model along with differentiated instruction and quite a bit of formative assessment and continuous assessment of students, to see some turnaround in some of their traditionally struggling high schools. And they credit a lot of that to better understanding of where kids are in terms of their learning and adjustments that they've made instructionally. And with respect to formative assessment, and we'll be talking about common assessments that are being used at the different tiers to help with the grading, their effect sizes of over half a standard deviation to seven tenths of a standard deviations, which is essentially 11 to 14 percentile points on average in schools where it's done well. And that means timely feedback, that means using the information to guide instruction. If we're not using it to make the instructional changes, then we're not going to see that data, obviously. And one of the things we're trying to do with continuous improvement is to make those adjustments. Now, we're still obviously in some of the early stages in how that's being implemented here in the district, but we'll be talking about that tonight. I know you've seen this quote, but Robert Marzano has said that standard practices, traditional practices have not gotten results and that those grades are almost meaningless. There are correlations between grades and test scores in the traditional approach, but that essentially means that the higher a student's grade is, generally the higher the test score. But where the bar is set is very different. We've all heard about the issues with grade inflation and that has raised concerns here. 10 years ago, there was a front-page story with our data in The Tennessean. It was actually five years to the day after I started in Metro Schools. I had shared some data that, I was a part of a state committee looking at a universal grading scale for the state of Tennessee. And I shared some of our high school data with them without expecting it to be on the front page of The Tennessean and highlighted. And I've still, 10 years later, I still have it. It was a big story, two-parter. And I thought, okay, this is going to change things. We're all going to see the discrepancy and we are going to respond to that. I've since looked at the data twice. Every few years I go back and look at it and we still see the disparities. And the disparities I'm talking about are, for example, without naming, and I did keep school names out of The Tennessean, but I numbered our high schools at that time, 1 to 15. What you see here, the total height of the bar is looking at A students across the district. The total height would be what percent are proficient or advanced. And essentially all of our A students at those, at that time, were proficient or advanced in Algebra I on an EOC. But you see, the blue is very different. Those are the kids who were advanced on the EOC and that varies a bit. But our A students are generally at least proficient at where at that time on the old standards. When we get to a B, we see some schools where 100% are advanced and we see other schools where a small percentage were advanced and maybe 2/3 or so were proficient or advanced. When we got to a C, it started to drop off considerably in some schools in terms of performance. And same with the D. I'm going to stop here, we're not going to go any further, but you get the idea. There was a pretty big drop. Well, that was, that was over a decade ago. This is from a couple of years ago, after we raised the standards in Tennessee. This is a different perspective. You see the Algebra I grades on the left, A, B, C, D, E, F. The orange shaded boxes here would be what our grades should be if they were matching what the state says an advanced score or proficient score means. On the state grading scale for TCAP and of course tests, an advanced score should be an A, a proficient score a B. The basic range, the upper end is a C, the lower end a D on their grading scale that they give us, and anything below basic would be an F. And what you can see is we've got almost 40%, at least two years ago, almost 40% of our B students on the Algebra I, in Algebra I taking the course, were below basic or basic. Yet we had over a quarter of our students who were D students based on grades who were proficient or advanced. And that's district-wide. And the variation, as you can imagine, is pretty considerable from school to school or classroom to classroom. Same thing with TCAP math, except that here it's more a matter of grade inflation. We, the middle school, and this is looking at middle school grades, 5 through 8. The middle school math assessment has been the hardest TCAP assessment. But we have only a third, we have about a third of our A students who are below basic or basic at that time. And almost a quarter of our B students were in the bottom category, below basic. Now, we do have some students in the bottom right quadrant who are getting low grades but making good scores. Now, there shouldn't be a perfect relationship between grades and test scores, but there should be a stronger relationship than what we're seeing here if these tests are valid measures. What it tells us is that we're setting the bar at different places in terms of our classroom expectations for kids. And I'm a big believer that if we're going to narrow the achievement gap, we have to have consistent expectations, consistent standards across classrooms. And that's what the intent is with standards-based grading. So before we get into the discussion, I'll just update where we are with the assessment calendar. And I've given you a handout that shows grade by grade and we can talk about that a little later, what the calendar looks like. We have added some assessments this year, most of which you're aware of, a constructive response assessment to help us get ready for the PARC assessments at the high school level. Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II have been added since last year in the fall. As you have been updated, we're doing a TCAP writing assessment online in the spring as part of our Race to the Top funding. A new assessment that's a state requirement is a technology literacy assessment in grades 5 and 8. Each assessment taking about an hour. That is a state requirement. And one new assessment, PARC pilot assessments, getting us ready for the next year. We just found out in the last couple of weeks that we have a number of schools that are part of the pilot. And when I say a number of schools, most of our schools are in the pilot, but a lot of times it's two classrooms at a grade level in one subject. But it will be, it will have an impact. Some of the testing is performance-based, which will occur prior to TCAP toward the end of March, 1st of April. There are some schools that are selected for that pilot. There are other schools that are selected for the end-of-year pilot, which will occur in the month of May after TCAP and end-of-course testing. It's grades 3 through 11. So in response to that, we have taken a couple more things off schools' plates that I'm not even sure they are aware yet, but we will be updating our calendar. You already were aware of the SAT 10 being removed. We are going to make the third Discovery Education Assessment optional for schools. If they're using it to have conversations with students, to monitor progress, that, you know, that's their option. And the biggie in terms of time, the Spring Constructed Response Assessment that we were going to be doing is part of our preparation for PARC. Since we're doing one in the fall and now since we have so many schools involved in the pilot, we're going to remove that requirement. And that also required scoring by teachers, so that component will be removed. So while it's still a very busy schedule, we are trying to balance the decisions to also be prepared for the transition to PARC, but to not make it hopefully overwhelming.
A lot of people are taking notes up here.
I'm going to share, all of this will be shared electronically. And all of those updates are included in the handout that we gave you on the grade-by-grade testing. And there is at the end of that handout, a description of each of the assessments. One thing, before we have our presentation from Kevin Armstrong, I do want to announce that we are going to be taking some time this year, my department, to get a better handle on what's happening, what's working and what's not in our schools. You can call it an evaluation or even an audit of our assessment practices and data use practices. I've spent some time and some of my staff talking with instructional coaches and I can tell you that teachers are at very different places across the district in terms of their comfort level and in some cases their understanding of what we're trying to do. And I want to get a better handle on where we are. And sometimes it's not always, as you know, the loudest voice that's representative of the group. But what can we learn and take away from that in terms of, you know, the assessments themselves, the training that might be necessary to make this work? It can be overwhelming when you have, you know, this much on your plate and you're to balance everything with instructional. to balance everything with instructional, you know, practices. So, one of the goals is to find those classrooms that have a good handle on how to integrate the assessment and the instruction. And I think we've got some teachers tonight who can help serve as those models. But to share those practices, whether it's them talking with other teachers, videotaping, but giving those examples to others. There may be some things that haven't been implemented the way we would like, and we want that kind of feedback. So, we'll have some candid conversations. It won't be about evaluating schools. It's about evaluating our practices as a district. So, we've kind of informally started that practice, but we hope to gather data to get a more systematic set of data to help us make decisions about our assessments. All that being said, we don't have a whole lot of option in terms of the transition to PARC with some of the assessments that are on the table. So, of course, we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers. Kevin, I think you're ready to, you're going to do a little presentation. Jake, you're going to set that up.
Is it on your?
Okay. Today, I'm going to speak about continuous improvement model, formative assessments, and lastly, grading for learning. As far as the continuous improvement model, it's based on best practices, and what it does is that it stresses the use of quality assessment tools throughout the system. It allows a teacher to take a deeper look into what's going on in the student data, and it creates a better understanding of their student's strengths and weaknesses. It provides for continuous monitoring of performance. We continuously wrap around and have checks for understanding throughout the entire year. We don't just cover it for three weeks and then drop it and hope at the end of the year that they've remembered it. It addresses the achievement gap between all subgroups, which is huge for us. That's one of the things that's really how on our list is really reducing that gap between subgroups. And it supports data-driven decision-making in everything that we do. We try to make sure that data drives everything that we do in our building. Are there four pieces to the continuous improvement model? We have plan, do, check, and act. And once again, once you get through that phase, you go right back through it. So, that's one of the things that our teachers are working hard on this year. The first piece is the planning piece. I'm going to use our literary focus as an example. As you know, our literacy scores were not what we thought that they should be, so we've really designed a plan to really work hard. The first thing that we did was we created a literacy-focused calendar. We took the 10 standards or the 10 areas of focus, and we prioritized those from the weakest to the strongest. So, we looked at how our students did building-wide and what were the weakest standards. Those were the ones that we attacked first. So, for example, in our building, citing evidence was the weakest one throughout all four grade levels. So, the first three weeks of the school year, we focused on citing evidence in every single class, from related arts all the way back up to the top through literacy. At the end of that three-week period, we took a seven-question assessment through our literacy classes in grades 5, 6, 7, and 8. And we were using that data to drive. We want to know who has mastered that skill, who is still struggling with that skill. And then, we get to the next phase, which I pretty much covered. The do is the actual teaching of those standards. And once again, every three weeks, we have a different focus. Our students just finished their assessment on their second three-week focus, which was citing evidence. The first one was central idea, I'm sorry. The first area was central idea. They just finished their last one on citing evidence, and we're in the process of looking at that data currently. Checking. This is the piece where the assessments are given, once again, through the literacy classes. The data results are disaggregated and discussed among all stakeholders. We let the students know exactly where they are. Teachers identify students who did not master the standard and begin a plan of action to work on weaknesses. The good part about this is, when our students just took their last assessment on citing evidence, there were also seven questions on that assessment that dealt with central idea, which was the first area focus. So, every three weeks, not only are we giving questions on that assessment on the current focus, but we're also wrapping around to the focuses that have been addressed earlier on in the year. So, if a student did not master central idea during the first three-week assessment period, when they took their assessment on citing evidence last Friday, there were questions on there regarding central idea. So, we're then able to see that the students that did not master it the first time, master it. And also, did the students that mastered it the first time, are they still retaining it, which is huge for us. The last piece on that is enrichment time. We have a 50- to 55-minute period at the end of the day that's already built into our master schedule. This is what we use to differentiate instruction and to reteach objectives. It's also a time that we use to reassess, which is a part of grading for learning, which I'll talk about here in a second. All students are reassessed to see if they have mastered and/or maintained the mastery of the standard. And once again, once we go through one focus and we begin the next focus, that continuum continues. Formative assessments. The goal of formative assessments is to monitor student learning, period, to provide ongoing feedback that can be used to improve instruction. It helps students to identify their strengths and weaknesses, and it also targets areas in where our students need work. It helps students recognize where our students are struggling and addresses problems. And not only does it address the problems, but it addresses them immediately because we're able to get immediate feedback. And the biggest piece, our formative assessments are low stakes, and that's something that initially our teachers struggled with, quite honestly, is making sure that formative assessments were just that low-stake assessments, that in grading for learning, our formative assessments do not carry a grade that counts as a value. Those things have zero value. So, with that, we're able to assess students to find out what they know, what they don't know, in an environment that is not stressful to the child. The summative assessments are the only ones that actually count towards their report card grades. This slide was really huge in our building in really getting the teachers to understand the continuum that we use in not only formative assessments or grading for learning, but also the continuous improvement model. We have practice, and then we have scrimmages. We call homework practice in our building, and that's exactly what it is. Students go home and they practice. They come back, and we go over it, but it does not count as a grade in the grade book that actually goes towards their nine-week grade. We then have scrimmages, which are formative assessments, formerly known as quizzes. And once again, that is an opportunity for our teachers to see where our students are. The way that I phrased it to our teachers is that, because I'm a sports nut, but the way I phrased it to them was, you are the coach and the owner. You control the schedule of the game. If the game is originally scheduled for Friday, and you're practicing and you're scrimmaging, and you see Wednesday, Thursday morning, that you're about to go into a game and lose, you can push that game back to Monday or Tuesday. Continue scrimmaging until you see that the vast majority, or all of those students, better yet, are ready for game day. That really helps with the frustration level of teachers, because if students aren't ready, you're going to have a high number of students that are reassessing, which is frustrating to both teachers and students. But this way, they're able to continually practice and scrimmage before they get to that summative assessment. And then, at the end, we watch film, which is looking at the data, looking at the strengths and the weaknesses, understanding which students need to go back and reassess and which students have mastered those skills. Grading for learning, we've talked about it. Students have multiple opportunities to demonstrate proficiency. We give no grade lower than a 50 on any summative assessment. We do allow teachers to give grades below 50 on formatives, but once again, the formative assessments have zero value and carry no weight towards their final grade. It's required that all students score below an 85. This is just in our building, so I want to make sure I put that out there. Any students that score below an 85 on a summative assessment, they are required to reassess at least one time, and you will see an example of that here in just a minute. Students will be given additional opportunities to show mastery of standards. Thus, extra credit will not be assigned. We've taken away the fluff. We do not include zeros in grade determinations. If we have a student that is absent due to an illness, and we do not have enough evidence to give them a grade at the end of the nine weeks, we give them a grade of an I. Our teachers, it's required that our teachers have a conference with the parent. We come up with a three-week plan, and the student has three weeks to take those summatives that they have missed. And then, once we have gotten to that point where we're able to provide evidence and change that I to whatever numerical value that it's needed to be. We don't reduce marks on late work. Another way that we combat that is, 100% of our summatives are done in the presence of the teacher. So, we don't have students that are failing because they're not bringing their assignments back and things like that. 100% of their grades are done by assignments that are done in the presence of the teacher. So, we've really eliminated late work because all of our summatives are done in the classroom. Behavior's not included in grades, and I think you all know that. We use our effort rubric to put that information in. Practices that distort achievement. Grading for student behaviors, once again, we don't use behaviors as determining factors in their grades. All that information goes into their effort grade. Reducing points for late work, which as you spoke about. Giving extra credit, which has been eliminated. Punishing cheating with reduced grades. What we do is, if we find a student that's being dishonest, we take the test up, and they have to reschedule the time that they take another assessment, and it's not the same assessment. It's over the same standard, but it's not the same assessment as opposed to giving a student a zero. We do not include attendance in grades. As I stated earlier, if a child is absent and they do not have enough evidence, we give them an I at the end of the nine weeks until we're able to get that information. Giving a grade for an assignment, we use rubrics. In grouping assignments, we use rubrics, so students are graded individually for group assignments and not everyone getting the same grade. This is another example of how we use the grade. If the average temperature in Donaldson was 85 on Monday, 87 on Tuesday, 88 on Wednesday, 84 on Thursday, and I forgot to take the reading on Friday, is the average temperature in Donaldson 68. The way things used to be with our grading practices, if those were my grades and I showed proficiency in three of the four, and I was borderline basic proficient on the fourth one, and I didn't do my homework on Friday, my grade at the end of the week would be an F. And I've shown you that essentially that my average is around an 86 or 87. So, this is now done away with grading for learning. A short guide to grading for learning, and I'll go through this really quick because a lot of this is redundant. Change of focus. Grades must be accurate, consistent, purposeful, and meaningful. The categories, it's very explicit in which categories that our teachers have to use each nine weeks per subject area, and there's no delineation from that. It's straight down the page. Incompletes, once again, we give I's at the end of the nine-week period, but once again, we give our students three weeks to get those I's changed. Classwork and homework is now called practice, and Marzano reported that feedback is a very high-yield strategy. We make sure that we're giving our students constant feedback with practice in terms of formative assessments. Late work, once again, they're not penalized. Extra credit is done away with. We've removed the fluff. Retakes, these are huge. When we first started grading for learning, we did not have an intervention time period, and a lot of our retakes, quite honestly, took place during lunchtime. Kids were giving up a couple of minutes of the lunchtime. We now have a 50- to 55-minute period each day where our students can reassess, which is a big part of what we do. This is an example of a grading category. This is grade 7. As you can see, first nine weeks right now, seventh graders throughout the district are learning, or being, those five areas are being covered first nine weeks: addition and subtraction of rational numbers, multiplication and division of rational numbers, application of rational numbers, numbers, and statistics and vocabulary. And how you could correlate that to what you see is, this is an actual snapshot of a seventh-grade math teacher in our building, and you see that those are the same five categories, straight off the page. So, you don't see quiz 1, test 2. They're not creating their own categories. They're following the categories, as are all seventh-grade math teachers throughout the district. This is an example, and I wish the headings were not yellow, but where you see the asterisks and the zero, those are formative assessments that have zero value. The grades are put in, but you see that it has a zero value. And what you see kind of in the middle is, you see formative assessment adding, that's formative assessment on addition and subtraction of rational numbers. And you see that there were two assessments, there are two formative assessments that were given before the summative assessment was given. The summative assessment, the grades in that column are the only grades dealing with addition and subtraction of rational numbers that actually counts towards their grade. And where you see the small Rs out to the side of the grade, that is where a student has reassessed and has received a higher grade.
No, we can't see any of that, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I honestly really can't see at all that good. I know what I'm looking at, so, walking in the dark. But it's really working in our building. I don't want to steal Miss Newman's thunder, but we've been working on this since the fall of 2011, where we were part of a pilot program. We started in January 2012. So, this is our fifth semester in doing grading for learning, and we're really excited about the changes that are going on in our building. We've had basically zero complaints from parents ever since we started it. What we're starting to see is that we start to see an accurate reflection on DEA, on TCAP, and on their report card grades, where there's an alignment. And we're not seeing kids with straight As that are below basic, as Paul Changus alluded to earlier. So, that's what I have.
Before I turn it over for questions, I don't know if any of our teachers want to make a comment. We have teachers' perspective, obviously. We also have a parent's perspective. Shannon's got a son who, I believe, is experiencing grading for learning as well. But does anyone want to say anything before we turn it over?
I'd love to hear Shannon's take on it.
She's pretty shy. We'll see.
Yeah, I know, right?
Well, first of all, and lots of conversations that I've had with teachers, parents, grading is personal. Everybody has their own feelings about grading, how they were graded, how their children were graded. I used to, in school, all the As were called out first, and all the Bs. Then, you had your grade in a big red marker on the paper. So, it's really personal. So, I think the shift is difficult for some because it is so personal. But I will say, my son has the ability to retake, and I appreciate that because over time, I can see that he has become somewhat, he's not all that motivated, a little bit apathetic, but the ability and the investment that the teacher is making is really making a difference in just his attitude about school, which I really appreciate. Another thing that I truly appreciate is the purpose. It's about the mastery of standards. It's not about bringing in a box of tissue. It's not about being able to spell supercalifragilisticexplanadocious as a bonus word. It's about how he's doing at mastering the standard, and I see that in the reflection of the formative that's coming home. So, I really appreciate it.
Any comments from our teachers?
Yeah.
I don't mind getting any. I have a fourth-grade teacher. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Tulip Grove Elementary. And we are, this is our eighth week, of course, implementing this, and we're essentially piloting it. And I must say that I've had an extremely positive experience thus far simply because it is causing me, as a teacher, or giving me the opportunity to be extremely standards-based in my teaching and in my instruction, and this is, I'm new to a grade level as well. So, not only is it helping me guide my instruction, because I look at my standards when I'm planning my lessons, and I might make a common assessment before I plan that lesson so that I know what my end result needs to be for my students, so that I can look at my standard and I can think, and I can determine what do my students need to master at the end of this. So, I might create an assessment piece before I teach that, before I teach a particular lesson, so that at the end of the lesson, I can give that particular assessment, and I will be able to truly see what my students are mastering. So, for me personally, it's really helping me guide my instruction to ensure that my students are mastering each and every standard across all academics. So, it's been extremely positive in our eighth week implementing it thus far.
I guess I can speak from a few different perspectives. As a teacher, I'll start with that. As a teacher, I was not the most knowledgeable about standards-based grading two years ago when I first heard about it. And I liked the way I was grading. I was quite happy with it, and so I just kind of kept doing what I was doing for a while. And then, we started the ambassadorship and really looking at standards-based grading. And this year is the first year I've been 100% wall-to-wall standards-based grading, and it has been the most rewarding year for me as a teacher when grading, because you give kids an assignment, I teach English, by the way, at White's Creek. If I give them an assignment, it's a writing assignment, they totally miss the question that I was asking them to write about, just didn't get it. But if I've got those grammar standards and those language standards and things like that in there, and they do that well, it was really exciting for me this year because I was able to put in, all right, well, as far as appropriate language, which is one of my standards, you did well at that. You know, they hit it. So, I can give them a good grade for that instead of, they missed the whole point of it, so now they have a D. Now, they've got, as far as writing about what they were supposed is one of my standards, you did well at that. You know, they hit it. So I can give them a good grade for that instead of, they missed the whole point of it, so now they have a D. Now they've got, as far as writing about what they were supposed to, we need to work on that. But the student can now see, when I have a rubric, exactly what they need to go back and fix. So they're not going back and rewriting the whole paper and messing up on something they did well the first time. It's a lot better for the student to understand where they need to improve, and it's a lot better as a teacher because you can appreciate what every child does well. So that's been the most rewarding part for me as a teacher in making the shift to standards-based grading. Now, on like a larger scale, I'm the ambassador and doing standards-based grading for our school. So I've worked a lot over the summer as far as making sure that this process is smooth for the teachers. Because if you just come in and tell people, this is what you got to do, people don't understand. So we did a full year of assessment PD last year. Almost every month, we were doing some sort of PD on making sure our assessments were aligned with the standards. And this summer, I got together with some of the administrators and Dave Holden, and we created a manual of practices at White's Creek of our grading. And one thing that I pushed and pushed and asked my principals to give me was, I need a description of what every grade means at White's Creek. And I made them tell me, what do you expect out of an A, out of a B? And we put language with each level so that the teachers know, if I give a child a C, or if I'm scoring them at a C, this is what the principal expects that work to reflect. And it's been really helpful for the teachers. So we've all made the shift, but we made it with the proper support because we did a lot of groundwork over the summer in making sure that they understood exactly how to do this. So that's the success that I can share from my building about it.
At DuPont Hadley Middle School, we've been involved in this process for several years, sort of the forerunners in our district, I believe. To put it simply, I could say that it's always been about the student, what's best for students. And grading for learning, standards-based assessment is what is best for students. When I first came to Metro Schools, I think it's been five years ago now, and I've been teaching for 35 years, I had students in a classroom that had given up. They had no hope. Standards-based assessment and grading for learning gives students hope. It offers them another opportunity to learn. So I think if we continue to do things the way we've been doing, we'll get the same results. Standards-based assessment is a different way of looking at a student's progress. It is a more informative way to communicate what a child has learned of parents. An A in my school should mean the same thing as an A in any other fifth-grade math class because we're all assessing the same things, the same standards. So it makes grading equitable. It does tell a personal story. It tells each child's story. And each child has their own story to tell. It gives them hope. Probably the hardest part of grading for learning has been writing all the assessments. But I have to continually remind myself and remind my team of teachers as we gather together and we write our assessments together, that it's not about us. It is about our students. Yes, it's not going to be easy, but it is doable. It is something that we can do, and it's the right thing to do. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I guess, questions at this point?
Do you have questions? Anyone here?
Questions?
Yes, I have a question about the decrease of disciplinary problems. What do you find in the classrooms now that they know that they are not...
Students are engaged. They are much more engaged in the classroom. And if they're engaged in learning and they know that they have an opportunity to learn, if they need help, they can ask for help. They can come in for tutoring before or after school or during lunch. They can ask questions. They're more engaged. And if they're engaged, they're more likely to learn. So I've seen a decrease.
I also had another question to Paul, Dr. Changas.
Paul's fine.
How many, back to the PARC assessments and the pilot, how many schools are in the pilot? And what are we doing for the technology piece in order to get them tested?
I can get you all the specifics in terms of the numbers of schools. And not all of it has been finalized yet with the pilot, but the vast majority of our schools, over 100 schools are part of it, about almost 400 classrooms. But like I said, it will be typically a one-hour assessment and probably another hour administrative time prior and after the assessment. So it's a fairly significant amount of time. It's less time than we would have been spending with the constructive response assessment that we've taken off the plate. But the technology side is not a new issue. We knew that, we knew PARC was coming. We've been trying to address it with writing assessment being administered online last spring. We gave the DEA, the Discovery Education Assessment, grades three and above online entirely this year. We had a few minor issues, but I know for the most part, it went surprisingly well in the spring with the TCAP writing. There's still some areas that we're trying to address. Information technology has been great. John and his team have, we've had numerous meetings. They've been quick to respond to schools. We know that there's a technology investment that still needs to be made in some cases, but we think we're in a lot better shape than most districts.
I'd be interested to hear from Dr. Salem Missdale. Have you heard anything from your teachers, how they feel one way or the other about standards-based testing? I can't get it out.
First of all, I'm going to start for elementary. We've had a standards-based report card for, I guess, the last 11 years. So therefore, for elementary schools, they are familiar with the standards-based report card. When you talk about grading for learning, what we did, and we didn't say, you're going to do grading for learning, what we proposed to our principals, we brought it to the principals, and we call it fixes. And that's exactly what it is, O'Connor's book. And I presented the fixes to the principals, and I said, okay, what are you already doing? Because we don't have to change a lot of things. We already have our report card. It's standards-based. We're not giving a grade for behavior. So we have, if you look at the fixes that they're talking about in the book, we basically have covered most of them. So it was, I haven't heard a lot of complaints from the elementary tier.
Jay, I don't know about you, but I have not.
Is this, okay, it is working. I really am not hearing complaints. I've had one complaint that came in writing that I saw today that went to Dr. Register. They're calling you. So they're not calling us. I'm meeting constantly with the principals to have those conversations. And today, we met with the lead principals and discussed a little bit. And each one of them will have at least one in the building that hasn't made the shift, or is not willing to make the shift, or doesn't see the value of making the shift. You're going to find that. There's always going to be people that resist something new because it is the way it's been done for the majority of my career. When I first heard about it, of standards-based grading, I too had the questions, well, that's not going to work. There's no way that can work. But when I saw, I think the eye-opening thing to me was, and I know, Ms. Kim, you can relate to this, when I go into a TFA classroom, I know immediately it's a TFA teacher because of the use of standards and data. It's so evident in the way they teach and the way they assess. And it's so evident in the way the kids respond to it. The kids own their learning, and they know exactly, I have not mastered that standard yet. I have to redo something, and I have to jump through these hoops to redo it in order to get mastery. And it is so powerful to see that. When I saw that, I saw it at, well, I've seen it in several of our schools, TFA, but I also saw it at STEM Prep Charter. I've been in that school twice, observing classrooms and walking through with Kristen, the principal. And it is powerful to see when a teacher does it well. And I would love to go into these three ladies' classrooms and see it because it is powerful when a kid knows their standards, and they know where they are with mastery, and they know what to do with the teacher facilitating that learning, of what to do to get that mastery. So I'm not hearing the negative. Maybe I'm shielded from it, but the principals are on the front line with it, dealing with it. So I would...
Not really. I mean, we hear, most of what we get are negatives. And we are used to that. And you're right, we'll probably hear it before you will. But the negatives are a given. I'd love to hear some positives, just, you know, for kicks and giggles, for a change.
Well, I think you're about to, because that's one of the things that we discussed in the network lead meeting today, that they need to start sharing their voices with you and not let a few vocal people who are negative against the shift fill you with that opinions. That the other people need to share their opinions also.
Dr. Gentry? So, you know, one of the things, and I know you guys all know this, that people don't resist necessarily change. They resist being changed. And so we're asking people to do something differently. And I think that, you know, showing the benefit of that change is great. And I can tell you a story from a parent perspective, and I was just, I just lament and whine to Dr. Brandon about this every, you know, second and fourth Tuesday, that, you know, I have a daughter that struggles with math. She just does. And it blows my mind. I thought that was genetically passed along, but apparently it is not. And so this year, major difference. It started last year. This year, major difference. And I'm not saying she's knocking it out of the park, but her approach to it is totally different because now she knows what's wrong. And that's the big difference, is, you know, to your point about the English paper, I can give you back the entire paper. And you can, it's kind of like that game, you know, you swap things out, and so you've got six of them right, you go swap more, and now you've got two right. It's just, now I know what to move and what I need to manipulate. So I don't, you know, I guess we can all sit here and say, duh, about it, because it makes perfect sense to us. So I don't think that the teachers that have an issue with it, and so I don't know that the approach of piling good evidence is really going to change their position. People resist being changed. You can. I mean, I don't know. I don't have a mic.
That's exactly kind of where I was going with why I was so systematic, why we at White's Creek were so systematic about how we did it. A lot of times, people don't like being changed, especially if they're unsure about how to do it, or what the result is, or what the benefit is. If you just say, you have to do this, and they don't know why, they don't know how, and they don't know what the end result is going to be. And I think that made it a lot easier for us, is we made sure that we did a lot of hard work to get everything ironed out so that it was as easy for the teachers as possible, and they could see how to do it. It wasn't going to require them to reinvent the wheel. It was a fix. We spent an entire year looking at what we were doing. Every assessment PD, we had to bring an assessment that we had already done. And you look at what you did well, what is aligned with Ken O'Connor's book, and what's not, and you fix that. And that kind of attitude translates to the kids. We give them, look what you did well, and then fix what you didn't. But it's all about the framework that you lay. And I think it seems like at DuPont Hadley, they've laid a really good framework for their teachers so it's easy to see how to do this, what the benefit is, and how to defend it when you're approached by a child or by a parent. Because that's our main concern with, as a teacher, like, I'll do what you want me to do all day. But it's when the parents are coming at me, and the kids are coming at me, I need to know why I'm doing this also. So if you arm the teachers with that, which I know we have in our building, and it seems like everybody up here has tried to do that, I think that is something that helps the teachers be a little put at ease about it.
So two other things. And I think another piece that may help, and I know I ask this question a lot, about how it all fits together. Because I know we have a limited amount of time, so we get pieces, right? We get pieces of the changes that we're making to better educate and better evaluate our students. And so then we'll get another presentation on how that's going to support evaluation of our teachers, and then how that loop closes. So I think the other part that this reminds me of is the other presentation we had about, you know, in every grade level, the five things that a student will have done, and that's creating their own plan. And so this is actually input into their personal learning plan, because I need to learn how to now, I don't know what that says, do something. One of these things up here in yellow. It needs to go on that student's plan. So I think it helps to give that accountability. I think the coaching analogy is a good one also, because it really highlights the ownership, but also frames the amount of accountability and responsibility that a teacher has for that student's learning experience. The other thing I want to ask, it goes back to Dr. Changas' portion of the presentation, when we looked at a student who's getting a grade of F, and I still have a percentage of them that are knocking it out of the park on TCAP and other assessments, I would love to see that bumped up a games, the data from the earlier presentation. Because I still believe that data is the tripod. That's foundational. Because if you have a student that's making an F on classroom work, but can sit down and focus on, you know, even if it's just 10 students represented in that, I would dare say a lot of that is just foundational in how they feel about their classroom experience. So I would love to see us be able to get to the point where we can overlay those two pieces of data to say, okay, here's a student who's making an A. Here's a student who's making an A but still is below basic. Here's what that student has said about their classroom experience.
Just one comment. With respect to the use of data, we're just getting the tripod data electronically, but everything that we think can help raise student achievement will eventually go into our data warehouse. I do want to mention that we added a report in the data warehouse last year to allow teachers to see their grades and their test scores from DEA or TCAP. They can see this relationship in their building. And, you know, again, that relationship shouldn't be perfect, but when you see those kinds of patterns that we saw, it helps us maybe reevaluate where we are in terms of our expectations.
I would love to see an example of just one of those reports that overlays all of that information.
You made a great point, and it's something that Brenda and I have been discussing with the lead principals and executive lead principals, is how to help people see all the tying together. Dr. Register was presented with a list at a meeting recently, all of these initiatives that supposedly that leadership and learning is pushing down to everybody. But if you really look at the list, the things that Kevin talked about, and that's why I wanted him to talk tonight, was continuous improvement is a way of work. It's not, well, now you have to do a data notebook. Now you have to teach the standard. Now you have to, it's really good teaching. A good teacher knows what the standards are. They know where their kids are. They know what the assessment data tells them. And they know the instructional practices that are going to make that shift in the kid mastering that standard. All of that ties together in a continuous improvement, eight-step process. And it leads to grading correctly with the standard in mind. So it does tie together. We've got to do a better job in communicating how things fit together so people don't see them as add-ons. And they also know what to abandon from their schools, abandoning an old grading way, or abandoning a strategy that doesn't work anymore, or abandoning extra credit, or grading for homework. I mean, those are things that you can abandon that would take things off the plate. So we're going to have to be more explicit in our communication on things to abandon. So that's a challenge for us.
I have a question too, real quick. Shannon and Dr. Gentry, I want to ask this of both of you. Have you seen the confidence level of your students rise dramatically? I mean, I know that they're probably more engaged, and I know that they are probably getting it, but have you seen that confidence level rise in them as far as the standards-based testing is going? Because if you are, and in my mind, you know, it's pretty simple, you're going to be engaged because you're getting it now. But, you know, for some kids, you get it, and you're like, oh, yeah, this is cool. But for others, it's like, you know what? I can not only do this, but I can do more. So, I mean, are you seeing a big shift in the confidence level?
I think it gives students the ability to take risks. And I think so oftentimes, we don't give kids the ability to take risks. And it's a risk, right? You work hard and you kind of take a risk. But I'll tell you, it depends on his confidence level because it depends on the standard and the subject. But I will say, as a parent, I'm more confident. I'm more confident in his learning, and I'm more confident in his teacher, because now I'm getting a lot of feedback that, as a parent, I can use. So when I look at grade speed or parent connection, and I see puppy-dog worksheet, that doesn't tell me anything about the learning. And so I also think it's a fantastic homeschool connection to really give parents ownership and a voice and confidence. So that's where I see, I think I'm a better parent, and I'm able to help him with things that he struggles with.
Yes, that goes from being, you know, homework one, and then you have to have the conversation, well, what was homework one about? I don't really know. "I don't really know, I don't remember," because it's really, you just put it out of mind, we're going to pretend it didn't happen. So, we don't both end up in tears now, at the end of, I mean, we're literally, and I kid you not, I mean, sweating and tears, we're yelling at each other, because I can't get her focused on the problem, because I don't know what the problem is. I, I just know she can't get the solution. But I don't know what part of solving this seven-step problem is where, is what she's really struggling with. And so, once we were able to hone in on, and I know the questions to ask, and I know how to walk her through now doing the homework, and then I can kind of, now I have the vocabulary to hone in on, "Do you understand how to do, you know, X, Y, or Z?" And then she'll say, "Well, no." "Okay, that's where our wall is, let's just now kind of focus on some smaller problems that are just about that." So she's now, doesn't hide the math homework. She doesn't take Ipecac syrups to say, "I can't do my homework tonight." I mean, literally, we've been through it all. Not the Ipecac, but just about, you know, "My head hurts, I have sinus, my sinuses are kicked in, I can't do my homework tonight." I mean, there's, there's not the avoidance. So it's the willingness, I guess, to take risks, but the willingness to actually try and put 100% into it, because she knows that she's getting the guidance to get to, you know, proficient, as opposed to, "You don't know what you're doing, you got this problem wrong, this is your grade, now we're moving on to the next chapter."
I think that's been a positive, even though I know that CRA, constructive response, has been something that has taken a lot of teacher time. This is something really that has not only helped the teacher, but the student know exactly what it is that I need to know and what it is I need to do, as far as math is concerned. So, it did have some positive aspects to it, because not only did the student just have to solve the problem, they had to tell you what it was and then write about it. So I, even though I know a lot of people don't like taking the test, it did have some positive effects. Plus, teachers had relationships where they collaborated and talked about, what did they see, what was the student learning, and that kind of thing.
Question for the teachers, we're asking a lot of people to change, so let me just ask you to react to this. So how hard is this, how hard is this change to make? And related, does it demand that you change the way you teach?
I guess we can just go down the line. Did it change the way I taught? No. That may be attributed to the fact that this is my fourth year, and maybe the shift has been made along the process and the way. So does it change the way I've taught? No. Does it change the way I've graded and looked at and assessed mastery? Yes. Because the child that may have made an F before may make a B now, the child that may have made a B before may make a D now. It had, it has changed that, but it has not changed the way that I've taught. And it's been more reaffirming than unsettling, because you get to kind of see what you've done right, and just tweak the things that need to be tweaked.
And I agree, the transition hasn't necessarily been difficult in a sense that, honestly, as a teacher, as a, as a good teacher, as most teachers are in Metro, you're doing more than you realize you're doing. It's a matter of using grading for learning and even the evaluation to really point out and notice, "Okay, this is my strong point, and this is what I'm doing successfully, and this is where I could have its benefits." So honestly, for me personally, I realize that, that I might be doing something strongly, and that it would be having benefits and across all, all areas. So the transition itself is not necessarily difficult, because honestly, you're doing, you're doing it, it's just a matter of realizing it and continuing to realize the benefits and the strong aspects that you're doing.
Going to try to remember all those questions that you asked.
Is it, is it a hard change to make, and does it, has it really demanded that you change the way you teach?
It was not a hard change to make. Did it change the way I teach? It made me more proactive. I've always believed that the most important thing a teacher can do is to have their students engaged in learning process. They have to take ownership. Another part of being successful, I believe, in the classroom and having successful students is communication, which is a very important part of standards-based learning. Not only are you communicating to the student exactly what it is that your goal is for their learning, and they understand that, what it is exactly that they have to be able to do, create, construct, analyze, whatever that goal might be. There's a partnership that's created in that conversation. The other piece of the communication is to the parent, because they have to become a part of that team. Because when the student gets home in the evening and the parent's asking, "What did you learn at school today? What is your nightly practice?" I'm still trying to get over saying homework. That takes a communication piece. So, one of the things I have done differently is, I email my parents every week, what their goals are, what their vocabulary is, what we're going to be assessing on, what we're going to be practicing in the classroom. And everybody understands that there's a structure there, that we're going to practice for four days, and it's okay to make mistakes, and it's okay to ask questions. But come Friday, that's going to be our game day, and we're going to celebrate learning. So, was it hard? No, it wasn't hard. Did it take a lot of time? It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort to write all those assessments. That's the time-consuming piece for a teacher, from my perspective. But it was the best thing. I hope I answered your questions.
Ms. Berry?
Yes, thank you for this wonderful panel discussion. I find that the information you presented, Paul, about the correlation between test scores and grades, very compelling. And I love your idea about an audit of the assessment practices, and you'll be presenting that to us later, later in the year. One question that I'm interested in is, what's the, what's the number, we talked a lot about the assessments, but we haven't talked about the number of practice tests and, and the number of hours of practiced, practice tests that students are involved in. So just thinking about that for a future presentation. And one of the, you want me to stop there, or let you have a chance to?
Can I say something really quickly? I don't know, from a teacher, just an educator background and from all of my work in formative assessment over the past year, that there would be any real way to quantify that. Because great teachers are assessing all the time. It's intuitive.
Now, I absolutely agree with you, but I'm saying something different. I'm talking about these assessments that are on this sheet of paper, the high-stakes test, which we are not assessing all the time, clearly. So that, that's what I'm interested in. I think, absolutely, good teachers are, and we're always assessing, if it's no more than just looking in the eyes of their students to see if they've gotten it or not, or if there's a question. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that I've been concerned about attitudes of students, if they go through this kind of, I mean, I've heard some complaints about, "Oh, my kids are academical, they just, you know, they know they have another chance." But I really appreciate the idea that if they have not turned in their work, rather than just getting a 50, and, they, they get an incomplete. And that work, they have been, a plan of action that is written with, or they write with the help of their teacher, and they have three weeks to complete that. Have we had that kind of, can you talk about a student that's been in that situation?
I can take that. Okay. One of the things that, that we've instituted this year is, we have a reassessment form. So if a student takes a summative assessment, and let's say that they score 65 on that assessment, which is below our 85 benchmark, so that student has to reassess, there's a form that the student and the teacher have to fill out together, in which the student looks at the different pieces of practice that they have to go through, and then they create a timeline, that they're going to come back day three, day four, once this information is completed, and they're going to come back and they're going to reassess. So it's not just as simple as, "I take this test at 12:05 and I make a 65, I come back and take it again at 12:15 and magically I score an 80 and, and everyone celebrates." There's actually a procedure that the students have to go through, and by them having to go through that procedure, what they're starting to understand and realize is, "It's easier for me to get it right the first time." It's better for me to get it right the first time than it is for me to go through, through all of this. And once again, when we made it mandatory that everyone that scored below an 85 had to reassess, students that score above 85, they can reassess if they want to. I was looking through grade books the other day, and I saw where a student scored a 94 on an assessment and reassessed again and went from a 94 to a 97. And that really speaks to our, to our value-added group with, with our higher achievers, which is, which is one of the things that we've been, we've been concerned about, is pushing those students as well.
That's great, that's great.
I can talk about how we did that at White's Creek, it's quite similar, because that was my concern as a teacher, like, I'm not, can't do all these retakes now, that's a lot. But we, Dr. Olaj and I sat down and wrote a procedure, and it outlined, like he said, there must be something in place. We didn't say specifically what it had to be, because, you know, when you've got academies and all that, it's, it's hard to mandate one way. But we said, "There must be some sort of intervention that takes place between retakes." And it needs to be distasteful enough to make it easier to just do it right the first time. But I found that the freedom, like she was talking about, the freedom that it gives a kid to take risks, I've found that as well, because instead of encouraging apathy, which was, I was really afraid of, it hasn't. They, they are not afraid to try, they don't just shut down when they see the test and not try, because they're scared. They actually try, because they know they'll get appropriate feedback to get better.
Great. And I have a question.
Dr. Brandon? Just one, one, one last one, it's about the AP. I understand that students in AP classes don't use grading for learning, is that correct? Or is this across the board?
It's up to the principal.
And IB classes are the same?
It's up to the principal and the teacher in those schools to make those decisions as a team.
Okay.
We've not told anybody at AP, they have to do it, or IB, they have to do it. It's a conversation with the principal and the leadership team of that school.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Brandon?
Yes, so you mentioned having to do more and more assessments. As the year goes on, does that decrease? Does the, so it continues?
No. Use your mic, please.
It does not. If we're going to reassess and offer them an opportunity to, to retest two times, in addition to the first time, there's three assessments. And for every standard, that means you've got to have three assessments in place. So hopefully, it will be better next year, once we've, you know, written three assessments for every standard. But right now, it's a lot.
Yes. Any additional? Ms. Roke?
Okay, I got a couple about grading for learning, and then, I guess, are we done, this is just for us, this is take home? Should I ask, are we going to go through this?
No, we're not going to go through this.
I got a couple of questions about that, so.
We can address a couple of questions, and then we can certainly come back to those issues. Primarily, we wanted to talk about the, the most frequent testing, which is the, you know, the constant monitoring of student progress, but certainly we can address some questions.
Okay, so as well, the grading for learning, homework. I think one of your slides said that homework was good for feedback, but we don't grade for homework, right? How does that work?
Once again, homework is practice. So, if you come in, and let's say you had 10 questions for practice, you come in and all 10 of them are wrong, we're going to give you feedback as to why those 10 are wrong. And what, and what that does is, as Shannon alluded to, is that it really increases the number of students who take risks. You know, they're at home, they're really unsure about it, and in the past, they would just quit and just say, "Why try? I'll just, I'll just take the zero, I'm not going to try." Students are now coming in and, and with, with their best foot forward, and if, and if it's a, if it's a misstep, it's a misstep. But once again, in, in most instances, the grades go in, it has zero value. Some teachers are choosing when, you know, to, to put a formative in. Sometimes they, they put it in the grade book, sometimes they don't. But, but at any rate, it goes in with a zero value.
But they're, but they're going through every response on homework, and not entering a grade, but they're giving feedback on every, is that how it works for the teacher?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, and, and then the other question I have is, most of the complaints that I think I'm getting about grading for learning are from the magnet school principals, and I think-
Principals or teachers?
Teachers, I'm sorry, not principals. So I, I'm wondering why that might be, and Jay, you might have an answer for that.
I mean, I can speak on that.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm a magnet school parent.
Yes.
And what I can say is, last year, my daughter's report card grades, her DEA scores and TCAP were within two points of one another throughout the entire year. She was being challenged all year long. She had opportunities to reassess, went back and reassessed, and, and improved by, by, you know, by a couple of points. It is a little different in some of the magnets, in that, for example, in our, in our building, if they score below 85, that they have to reassess. In some of the schools, you know, it's a little different, you know, if they score above 85, maybe they don't have an opportunity to reassess, I'm, I'm not sure. It, it varies from school to school. But, but I, but I do think that students that have another opportunity to get it right, I think ultimately, that's our goal, is the mastery of skills. And if it takes a child one time on this particular standard, maybe this has been a weakness of mine for three years, and it takes me two times to get it right. Ultimately, the bottom line is, is that, is that I mastered the standard.
And then, on these, so, so I guess, one, one question that I don't think we've answered is the cost of all this testing, and I feel like I've talked until I'm blue in the face of why I don't like all these tests. And, you know, I think we need, I think, we, we talk about, really good teachers are always assessing, and I think that's true, and I, you know, but I, I wonder about having these kinds of tests, you know, this quantity. And my sense is, and maybe I'm just wrong, but that there is this sort of, there's just heavy-handed sort of accountability coming from the state. And so, and the complaint that I've had is that our district is also, if you look at the number, we're, we're giving a lot of these tests too, but my sense is that the tests, the tests that we're giving are to try to, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that we do okay on the TCAP and on the state testing, because the consequences are so high, they're high for the district, they're high for principals, they're high for teachers. And that's my concern, because I think, and of course, we need something formative, we need something summative, I'd be happy with two tests a year. I mean, I'm not an educator, but, you know, we have something where we know where the kids start, we know where they end. So I think, you know, and I, and I've talked about all my concerns about the quantity, you know, the, the costs and impact on other activities, like recess and arts and instruction time. And, and I read this sort of, and this is the last thing I'm going to say, because everybody knows how I feel about the testing, and maybe I need to do something about it, instead of continuing to talk about it at the board meetings, but I read this really interesting article, and it was comparing China and the US on tests. And they, they said, basically, China and the US have the same goal, which is to have all of their children scoring very high on standardized tests. And China, you know, has accomplished this goal, and we are just not as good at it, even though we, we share the same goal. But now China has begun to kind of reassess where it is, because what, what has come of all of this, they have a word for it, a Chinese word, and it means high scores, low ability. And what they have figured out from having these children take all these standardized tests, and they're performing well, and they're doing great, and they've got all these extra hours, and they're school all this time, and test, 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 they're doing great on their tests, is that they are producing bean counters, and they don't have entrepreneurs, and they don't have creative, you know, students. And that's what I worry about, you know, if we, if we're spending, you know, this, this gives us, and, and this gives us how many, how much time we're spending, you know, with just the test, but we have all this practice, and, you know, and my, my own child, you know, the 23 tests, and the month of the, one month of the year spent just in testing or testing prep, according to our teacher, those things worry me, so I don't know.
I'll just say, with regard to the test prep, that part of what the, you know, evaluation or audit, we hope to do is to get a better handle, because a lot of that is not something we're requiring, and there is, there is test preparation that goes beyond the kinds of assessment we're talking about tonight, that honestly, I don't know that a whole lot of test preparation is necessary by the time kids are old enough to take these standardized tests. But with regard to the cost, the biggest expense we have is with discovery education assessment, and that's in the neighborhood of $400,000 a year. It's actually going down, because we're doing more online testing. And we will, I know we've shared the, the data internally, and we'll get that to you. And then ACT, which we are required to administer, but we're only reimbursed through, you know, the EP on part of the funding. Most of these assessments are, the cost is, you know, the state's cost, but there is an investment in time. There, one thing I'll say about DEA, and we're at a- One thing I'll say about DEA, and we're at a point right now with discovery of, you know, trying to decide as we go forward with Common Core and PARC assessments, do we have the same needs for interim benchmarks? Do we rely more on the common assessments that are being used at the classroom level? What is our role as a district in supporting the use of those assessments? There's an ownership that has to happen at the school in terms of it being their assessments, but do we provide item banks? Do we provide assessments during, you know, to help with that transition? And we certainly can provide the tools that teachers need. But I'm hopeful, in terms of the bean counter issue, I'm hopeful that as we move into PARC and hopefully better assessments to get at application and true problem-solving and higher-order skills, and not all multiple-choice testing, that we'll do a better job in terms of those assessments. But one thing I will say with regard to DEA, and it may have, we may be past the point of needing that type of assessment, it did, as a district, I think, in the last five years, move us forward quite a bit in terms of our use of data, having a common language. When we looked at the situation six years ago, almost half of our schools were using discovery education. At that point, it was called ThinkLink. They were paying for it themselves, and it wasn't a district initiative, so we weren't supporting it as a district. They weren't having the conversations that we've had in recent years, in terms of using that data to have conversations, as teachers have conversations with students. We may be beyond that now as a district, but we need some kind of monitoring of, you know, I think, but maybe we rely on what schools are doing. And one of the questions I'll have, and I have a feeling these teachers will hear from us again as we try to support them, is what is it that would be beneficial to you? I've had that conversation with some of our elementary instructional coaches in recent days, in terms of what is it that you need in terms of those assessments from us?
So is our plan just to sort of continue the conversation, so that we can narrow out anything we absolutely, we don't need?
That is the goal, to see what's effective and what's not, and in terms of the assessments, in terms of the use of data, and if it's not getting results, and certainly in a district this size, the communication, as Jay mentioned, is always an issue, getting it down to the classroom level, why we're doing it, how to best implement. But if we find places that, where this is working well, how do we, how do we get that information to others in a way that isn't threatening, that we can get the buy-in we need? But yeah, if there are things that are not working, as Jay said, we will try to abandon those.
Dr. Gentry?
So if I were to be very optimistic, and take everything that we've been hearing today and over the past presentations that you guys have given, to keep us informed on the fact that we are proactively, and have been for a while now, taking a look at the tests and assessments that we've been given, but we do have those that are state-level required. So in an ideal world, I think what we're doing on this end with standard-based assessment really will start to kind of negate a lot of what we're doing, because the TCAPs and those state assessments really were trying to compensate for that variability that we just talked about, right? That we just talked about in grade, and an A wasn't an A, wasn't an A. So let me give a baseline assessment of how students are performing, which speaks clearly when you look at, I have an A student that's still below proficient. So I think it's something that we can do here, Amy, but I think the bigger part of it is a whole, is a national move towards understanding the benefits of having those standards at the ground level, so that we don't have to try to compensate for them with a myriad of standardized tests, because that's what it is. The standardized test goal was to normalize that performance, and how we viewed and how we understood our students were performing. And so if we can get that normalization to occur at the ground level, it then starts to mitigate, or minimize, or negate the need for that to happen so often, and in a myriad of ways. We have so many tests, because one's going to tell you this, and the other's going to give you a little bit of this, and you have to throw that piece together and try to get a big picture. And so the best picture we're getting of student performance is really at the ground level, by applying that standard space and teaching-for-learning approach here. And so the hope is to get that trend to bubble up, so that the need to assess and assess and assess with 14 different assessments to get that single picture, we've already painted the picture here. The test becomes to validate the picture that we've painted here, right?
And I didn't want to say, I was hoping to hear from teachers more tonight, and I feel like I've spoken a lot, but I want to say, you have just captured what we've talked about internally. The better we are at assessing students on a day-to-day basis with our standards-based grading approaches, does make the more formal assessments less critical. We know we're on track in terms of where our kids should be. So that's why we think this has power, and anyone who wants to join in, feel free to, in terms of thoughts. But we, that's why we presented these together, because it really is about assessing student learning.
Any additional comments? Dr. Register, any comments?
Thank you so much for being here. This has been a great conversation.
Absolutely.
Thanks very much for sharing. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other items on the floor for discussion? Ms. Frog?
This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Right.[1788.63]